I'm busy. But if you can't, I'm sorry. We'll tell Hiding.
There was a lot of budget.
Well, I thought so. But I would say, um, just give the disappointment and just move on.
Give anybody any of it, which is great.
That's the bright spot, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Must be. Good afternoon, everyone. Sorry we're a little late, so we better get rolling, if you don't mind. Everyone's present except for Mr. Kathy, who I believe is still in Greece. Lucky man. Welcome to all of you that are here. Sir, let's get started right away, if we could, with the judge's quarterly update.
Absolutely. Let's do it.
Madam Judge?
Mr. Mayor, Council. So, just here to do the quarterly update, kind of talk about the things that we've been doing recently in the courts. To start, we had our first council liaison meeting, which was great. We kind of got situated on where our authority comes from, the aspects on the rules as far as the procedure, and then kind of just briefly discussed kind of where we were going to go with the next meeting. I had the opportunity to meet with the mayor and discuss getting a security camera in the courtroom to serve security functions and also to be able to be monitored internally. And so that's something that we're really excited about going forward with. Latisha's been going to quite a few meetings, and I'll let her discuss that here in a second. We, one really thing, good thing that we're excited about is we got a consistent translator in since the last time we saw you guys. She's been in to do, we've been stacking hearings on one day, so she came in and did about four hearings for us back-to-back. And then last week, we had her come in for our video hearing that we needed to have up at the jail on an individual that had an immigration hold. And so that's been really exciting. We don't have to struggle. We got somebody consistent that's coming in, doing the job, doing it well. And so that's been really exciting. I'll let Latisha kind of go over some of the things that she does as far as the court aspect goes as a representative of the court, but some important things that we're doing as far as groups and that sort of thing.
If I may, right before she starts, while it's on my brain, Renee actually just told me a minute ago that those liaison meetings with you and Mr. Bond and Ms. Haskins will be the first Monday at 4:00 PM every week, every month. Okay?
So, we do some outreach groups. I currently am involved with our Healthcare for the Homeless. We meet on a bi-monthly basis, discussing with Kristi Oster and some of the Healthcare for Homeless people, some opportunities that we have to share, some opportunities for the probation clients that we have through our court. A lot of information that they may not necessarily receive in some other fashion, and so we have the opportunity to be able to provide some of those services and opportunities for those people. We, I also am involved in the Homeless Initiative, which number of us are also a part of. I attend the SIM meetings and the Metro Task Force. We have a meeting coming up on Wednesday for that. That is progressing wonderfully. And I also attend the providers' meetings. So, our providers meet, the mental health providers meet once a month and discuss a number of topics, and they have currently been talking pretty heavily about the mental health court. And so that is something that seems to be moving along at a fairly decent pace, and so we hope to see some progression within that service, hopefully sometime. Don't know exactly what that's going to look like, but we have a judge over in Circuit Court who's been working on that with Kristi Oster also. So, um, did you want to talk about our CWCC?
Yeah, so, kind of to piggyback off of that, so CWCC's kind of going through some transitions, and they've reached out to us to see if we'd be interested in doing some collaboration as far as a need with the mental health issues that we've been seeing, with the homeless issues that we've been seeing, to kind of bring that full circle to see if we can get some of the addiction services, some of the mental health aspects assessed early, so that then we can make a very clear plan and with collaboration with these other groups that are bringing forward different services, trying to get the full aspect of the rehabilitation taken care of. That's it for this?
And I believe we'll have you back tonight?
Yeah, I'm going to wait. I'll just step out.
Oh, I'm sorry you have to wait so long.
It's okay. It's no big deal.
That'll be good for Council, so we'll have her in executive session tonight as well, so. All right, well, thank you very much. Latisha, thank you. Let's move on to the Project SAFE bid update, if we could, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everybody. Project SAFE is the title that we've given to the work that needs to be done here in City Hall, and certainly safety is one of those elements of this project as it relates to the first part of that acronym, SAFE. We have gotten bids back, and the fact is, this is a report of what I would call both good and bad news, right? The good news is council authorized at some point in this process, which has been a multi-year process to get to this point, as you probably are all aware, allocated a segment of funding in the amount of $4.6 million, if I remember correctly. The lowest bid, actually, the base bid, the lowest base bid came back at, right at $4.6 million. That, to me, is good news. The problem is, particularly given the first iteration of bids that we went through with this project a couple of years ago, the bids were certainly way out of whack with respect to what it is we'd set apart for this and so on. So, I like that part of the report. However, you'll probably also recall that there were a couple pieces and parts that we informed you of and we got your blessing for, that erodes that $4.6 million sum to where the practical availability of dollars isn't actually $4.6 million. You'll recall, one of the primary things that you had given us the authority to move ahead with was a pre-order of the air handlers, so that we could avoid not only the price increases with respect to what we anticipated for that equipment, but also with respect to the lead times needed to get that stuff on hand and get it here, so that we can deploy, hopefully sooner than later, if in fact we could move forward with the bulk of this project. And that's one example. The other thing, however, that we need your direction on, if in fact you decide you want to move forward, and frankly, I hope you do, is that we need your guidance on a couple of the alternates that are also included in the bids that do take that price higher than the $4.6 million. We also have a contingency we need to discuss as well, that does increase that price also. So, we need to have a few elements of conversation with you tonight to see what it is you're comfortable with as it relates to, A, awarding the base bid, B, considering the means by which we could potentially replace that funding that was eroded in the, you know, corpus amount of money that you gave us the authority for, whether or not you have a stomach for proceeding with the alternates as well, and then, of course, what it is that you would consider by way of contingency for this project, the likes of which we don't typically proceed without when it comes to projects, and particularly construction projects. So, with that table setting for you to consider, I'd like to invite Zalima and her team up. We also have the architect with us here. Andrew and Scott are with us also. Who will lead from here, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely. Mr. Beamer?
Mayor, Council, I'm going to pass the baton very quickly to Scott Baxter, who's the associate engineer. He's been involved with this project for two years now, so I think he's tired of this project. But to follow up with Carter's good news, we did get four bids, and the two bids, the low bid and the next low bid, were within 1% of each other. So, that means we've got very competitive bids on this project. The other two bids were somewhat north of that estimate, but I think we should be assured that we've got a responsible bid in the low bid on this project, because on a $4.6 million project, to be within 1% is very good. But with that, I will turn it over to Scott. Two years ago, a year and a half ago, when we put it out, put this out the first time, it was north of $6 million. So, we've done a lot of value engineering to get to where we're at now at $4.6. The alternate one is to redo council chambers. Alternate two is to do some exterior improvements. But again, Scott and Lyle know far more about those details than I do, so I'll turn this over to Scott.
Mr. Mayor and council members, the thing I might add to the base bid this evening is, and you've probably seen this in the memo, is that if you have asbestos abatement that needs to be reviewed as a separate and added expense to this, that's roughly $50,000. We know that very well from some information that we received already. So, just strictly looking at that $4.4 million that we have, we know available right now in funding, and looking at the base bid amount that was $236,000 above that, and then the $50,000 for the asbestos that we're projecting, we would see about $286,000 that we would need just to reach those base bid amounts. And then there was the mention about what do we do for the contingency amount? And so we would need a decision. Sometimes we run those at 5%, which might feel a little thin on a project like this with a remodel project, which Lyle has mentioned to us. There could be a lot of unknowns in this old building that's had some modifications done to it. And sometimes we run those contingencies up to 10%, which I believe is what is in your memo as a pretty healthy contingency amount. So, in the memo, just speaking to the base bid only, I believe we wrote in there $520,000 would cover all of those base bid things and a healthy contingency. And I will say, just to add to this as well, we do have a recommendation letter that our architect, Lyle Murtha, wrote just yesterday. We received that, and he's recommending that we do award the bid in the base bid amount. He's recommending that we might look at $600,000 just to be sure of the components on this base bid amount. Obviously, you can look at the alternates if you would like to, you know, look into those. The council chambers remodel is the first alternate, and then the exterior improvements, and those prices go up, as you can see. But essentially, we're looking for guidance and direction on what, how you'd like to proceed, how you'd like us to proceed. And if you have technical questions about some of the design and scope, Lyle could speak to those as well.
So, if my math is right, you need $286,000 to get to base, and then another 10%, which is $460,000. So, we're looking at three-quarters of a million, we're light. Is that about right?
We were looking for 5%.
Maybe I had 5%.
5%? Oh, I thought you said up to 10%.
I misspoke. We did have 5%.
Okay. So, 5% would be?
In that 200.
$250,000. So, you're looking for a little over half a million to get there.
Exactly.
So, the question would be, I'm sure on the council's mind, Mr. City Manager, is where does that half million dollars come from?
Well, Mr. Mayor and councilors, you know, there's a couple places we could look. We could certainly look to the Capital Reserve, much of which we discussed within the last month or so, pertaining to projects that we proposed during the Capitol Agenda discussion. We could also talk about the possibility of using opportunity fund dollars that has been fueled by excess 1 cent '16 money. And, you know, beyond that, those are the two places that I have been considering as a possibility for this, depending how much of that you would like to see actually come to pass.
Well, the truth is, it has to be done, and the bids are $2 million under what they were last time, so we're finally moving in the right direction for a change. Counselor?
I just would like to be reminded, what exactly was the, I'm not sure who to ask, the exterior improvements?
The exterior improvements include a lot of hardening, concrete work out there, landscaping work. It's fairly significant. There may be some civil components that I'm missing there, but we feel like that those exterior improvements, first of all, in the sequence of construction, we come at the latter part of the project, which would run about a year anyway, and that we would need to look at an alternate way of accomplishing the needs on the exterior, which may include some of our own crews doing a little bit of the landscaping work. But we feel like we can, we can, we can cover basics out there if we need to without receiving that alternative. It's not something that we must absolutely do. Am I missing anything on that perspective, Zalima or Lyle?
So, Mayor and Council, so there is some exterior signage included in that. There's landscaping, a little bit of hardening in terms of bollards and stuff to make sure vehicles don't try to, you know, drive into the building, but and some exterior lighting is what's included in the alternate number two package.
What does that amount to, Carter?
It's $385,000.
That's above and beyond.
Yes, sir.
So, I guess my question would be, is that something that could be decided on later, since it comes at the end, so we can get through our budgetary process, kind of see where we're at, if we have any little places where we can pull some fat to maybe finish that, would be my question.
That's a great question. Andrew, how would you, what would you recommend in that regard, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor?
Mayor and Council, typically, you need to let the contractor know now with that price to hold, because otherwise, a year from now, he's going to go, whoa, I didn't order material, and the price has just gone up 10%, 15%. So, if you want to hold the price, you need to make that determination now.
That makes sense.
You can add it by a change order a year from now, but that $385,000 may now be, maybe now $450,000.
Sure. Thank you.
Two elements there, right?
Right. Thank you. Counselor?
The other thing, however, that we need your direction on, if in fact you decide you want to move forward, and frankly, I hope you do, is that we need your guidance on a couple of the alternates that are also included in the bids that do take that price higher than $4.6 million. We also have a contingency we need to discuss as well that does increase that price also. So we need to have a few elements of conversation with you tonight to see what it is you're comfortable with as it relates to, A, awarding the base bid, B, considering the means by which we could potentially replace that funding that was eroded in the corpus amount of money that you gave us the authority for, whether or not you have a stomach for proceeding with the alternates as well, and then, of course, what it is that you would consider by way of contingency for this project, the likes of which we don't typically proceed without when it comes to projects, and particularly construction projects. So with that table setting for you to consider, I'd like to invite Zalima and her team up. We also have the architect with us here. Andrew and Scott are with us also. Who will lead from here? If that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Mr. Beamer.
Mayor, Council, I'm going to pass the baton very quickly to Scott Baxter, who's the associate engineer. He's been involved with this project for two years now. So I think he's tired of this project. But to follow up with Carter's good news, we did get four bids, and the two bids, the low bid and the next low bid, were within 1% of each other. So that means we've got very competitive bids on this project. The other two bids were somewhat north of that estimate, but I think we should be assured that we've got a responsible bid in the low bid on this project because on a $4.6 million project to be within 1% is very good. But with that, I will turn it over to Scott. Two years ago, a year and a half ago, when we put this out the first time, it was north of $6 million. So we've done a lot of value engineering to get to where we're at now at $4.6. Alternate one is to redo council chambers. Alternate two is to do some exterior improvements. But again, Scott and Lyle know far more about those details than I do, so I'll turn this over to Scott.
Mr. Mayor and council members, the thing I might add to the base bid this evening, and you've probably seen this in the memo, is that do you have asbestos abatement that needs to be reviewed as a separate and added expense to this? That's roughly $50,000. We know that very well from some information that we received. So just strictly looking at that $4.4 million that we have, we know available right now in funding, and looking at the base bid amount that was $236,000 above that, and then the $50,000 for the asbestos that we're projecting, we would see about $286,000 that we would need just to reach those base bid amounts. And then there was the mention about what do we do for the contingency amount? And so we would need a decision. Sometimes we run those at 5%, which might feel a little thin on a project like this. With a remodel project, which Lyle has mentioned to us, there could be a lot of unknowns in this old building that's had some modifications done to it. And sometimes we run those contingencies up to 10%, which I believe is what is in your memo as a pretty healthy contingency amount. So in the memo, just speaking to the base bid only, I believe we wrote in there $520,000 would cover all of those base bid things and a healthy contingency. And I will say, just to add to this as well, we do have a recommendation letter that our architect, Lyle Murtha, wrote just yesterday. We received that, and he's recommending that we do award a bid in the base bid amount. He's recommending that we might look at $600,000 just to be sure of the components on this base bid amount. Obviously, you can look at the alternates if you would like to look into those. The council chambers remodel is the first alternate, and then the exterior improvements, and those prices go up as you can see. But essentially, we're looking for guidance and direction on how you'd like to proceed, how you'd like us to proceed. And if you have technical questions about some of the design and scope, Lyle could speak to those as well.
So if my math is right, you need $286,000 to get to base, and then another 10%, which is $460,000. So we're looking at three-quarters of a million were light. Is that about right?
We were looking for 5%.
Maybe I had 5%.
5%? Oh, I thought you said up to 10%.
I misspoke. We did have 5%.
Okay. So 5% would be...
In that $200,000.
$250,000. So you're looking for a little over half a million to get there.
Exactly.
So the question would be, I'm sure on the council's mind, Mr. City Manager, is where does that half million dollars come from?
Well, Mr. Mayor and councilors, you know, there's a couple places we could look. We could certainly look to the capital reserve, much of which we discussed within the last month or so pertaining to projects that we proposed during the capital agenda discussion. We could also talk about the possibility of using opportunity fund dollars that has been fueled by excess 1 cent 16 money. And, you know, beyond that, those are the two places that I have been considering as a possibility for this, depending how much of that you would like to see actually come to pass.
Well, the truth is, it has to be done, and the bids are $2 million under what they were last time, so we're finally moving in the right direction for a change. Counselor?
I just would like to be reminded, what exactly was the, I'm not sure who to ask, the exterior improvements?
The exterior improvements include a lot of hardening, concrete work out there, landscaping work. It's fairly significant. There may be some civil components that I'm missing there, but we feel like that those exterior improvements, first of all, in the sequence of construction, we come at the latter part of the project, which would run about a year anyway, and that we would need to look at an alternate way of accomplishing the needs on the exterior, which may include some of our own crews doing a little bit of the landscaping work. But we feel like we can cover basics out there if we need to without receiving that alternative. It's not something that we must absolutely do. Am I missing anything on that perspective, Zalima or Lyle?
So Mayor, Council, so there is some exterior signage included in that. There's landscaping, a little bit of hardening in terms of bollards and stuff to make sure vehicles don't try to, you know, drive into the building, and some exterior lighting is what's included in the alternate number two package.
What does that amount to, Carter?
It's $385.
That's above and beyond.
Yes, sir.
So I guess my question would be, is that something that could be decided on later since it comes at the end so we can get through our budgetary process, kind of see where we're at, if we have any little places where we can pull some fat to maybe finish that? Would be my question.
That's a great question. Andrew, what would you recommend in that regard, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor?
Mayor, Council, typically, you need to let the contractor know now with that price to hold because otherwise, a year from now, he's going to go, oh, I didn't order material, and the price has just gone up 10%, 15%. So if you want to hold the price, you need to make that determination now.
That makes sense.
You can add it by a change order a year from now, but that $385 may now be...
Could be $585.
Maybe now $450.
Sure. Thank you.
Two elements there, right?
Four elements there.
Right. Thank you. Counselor?
So I think, I agree with you. I think that, you know, we've done enough work on this project, it needs to proceed forward, and this is, you know, close, albeit a little bit over budget. I do think that we should at least consider alternate one. It seems a little bit silly in my mind to go through a relatively significant remodel and leave out council chambers room to save $200,000. I think if we're in it by, you know, 4.9 million, being in it 5.1 million is not that significant a difference when we've already got the crew here, we've already got the business disrupted here, and I think we should just do it at the same time. In terms of the exterior, that one, you know, puts us, it's quite a big jump between that one and the other, but I think we should at least consider alternate one.
I must tell you, I'm on the same train of thought you are, but the exterior one is almost more important to me. We're going to spend all that money taking care of this building, and yet we're not going to secure it. And literally, now that our fountain's gone and that this building is severely under-securitized, if you will, anybody could drive right through our council chambers during a meeting and take out a swath of people, and there's nothing to stop them. And that outside work that he's talking about, that's what that protects. It protects the actual building that we just dumped $5 million into. So to do all of the building and leave out $350,000, which protects the actual, all the work they just did, doesn't make any sense to me. So in my opinion, and it's just mine, if we're going to do it, we do it all like it was planned for. If we start trying to pick things apart, I think it's like kicking the can down the road, and it's going to have to get done at some point when somebody finally does run into that building or creates a security disturbance. And remember, it also stops them from being able to scale the walls and come in through the upstairs, which is easily done right now. So this was supposed to tie all that up and to protect our people in the upstairs as well. So I just have a really hard time. If we're going to spend 5.1, we spend 5.3, and we just get it done. But that's my opinion. So I'd open it up to anybody. Any other comments, questions? If not, I'm going to offer a direction and, I guess, see where we go. Okay, then what I will offer is that we just do the project the way that it was intended to be done, the way that we'd agreed to do it in the first place, and we let Carter figure out where to get the money. I mean, that's the truth of the matter. So if you're in favor of that, I need a thumbs up.
I have a question.
Now you have a question?
Yeah. You gotta let it marinate, man. It's not the moment we click on it.
I didn't realize you were like a piece of meat, but I will keep that in mind. Counselor, game ready.
I don't necessarily disagree with that. I do agree it's easier to say yes to the $200,000 increase. I thought the opportunity fund, were we not using both of those pots of money to also supplement our budget for the new police department? I thought we were talking about even clearing out the opportunity fund.
Sir?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, thank you for that question. The opportunity fund was historically fueled by largely proceeds from 1 cent 14, that particular cycle. And you are correct in that we did have dollars in that fund recently as $5.5 million. With respect to your provisional approval of the capital agenda, you did clear out the opportunity fund of those residue 1 cent $14 to help support the Casper Business Center remodel, okay? In the meantime, however, we have also accrued excess 1 cent $16 that essentially fell into the empty spot that the 1 cent 14 removal process that we're going through right now, frankly, and in the current budget process, would otherwise assume would be, the fund would be empty. So what I'm saying is, while I'd rather, you know, wait for that fund to be available for future capital agendas, it is there, it is money on hand, it doesn't violate any of your capital policies to consider it, and so that $500,000 could come from the excess 1 cent $16 that are now in the opportunity fund.
And if I'm correct, total project would put us at 5.3? Does that sound correct if we do it all? 5.5?
Based on a 5% contingency, which sounds like it's very conservative.
Right.
Mayor, Counselor, it would be 5, we have $525,000 is what we'd be asking for if we do the base bid plus alternate one and two.
Okay.
And a 5%.
And a 5%.
It includes everything, the asbestos abatement, the 5% contingency.
That's all.
10% contingency would be another quarter million. Just something to keep in mind.
If you want to add more money, oh.
I'm sure you would. Thank you for that. Okay, well, I will ask you again, if you're in favor of doing the entire project as it's presented. Carter has outlined it, how we can pay for it and hopefully get another 40 years out of this building. So I need a thumbs up if that's the direction you'd like to go.
Can I ask one more?
Are you kidding me?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I understand these are all options. You understand the city's finances better than us and the needs of this building you work out every day. Which one are you leaning towards? I know you try to stay as objective, nonpartisan on it as possible, but I don't, I'm not feeling equipped. It's a big purchase, and I'm not feeling equipped to say yeah or no, so.
So your question is, what would I recommend?
Of the three options, yeah. If you were in my seat, which of the three options would you lean towards?
Well, Counselor, Mr. Mayor, please. I appreciate the question, and, you know, if there were some concern among the council of really sticking to the corpus amount of money, then I would be satisfied with a base bid only, you know? But given some of the points that have been made and commentary about the alternates and so on, it's hard for me to disagree with that, too. I'm very comfortable with a 5% contingency. I'd like to see it at 2, frankly. I know that gives these guys some pause. I'm going to throw those dice. But no, I absolutely support what's being proposed so far.
Okay. Thank you. I guess just to lay my concerns on the table, the couple of years I've been on council, and I think Council Pollock's been really good by driving on this point, is it helps to have a comprehensive overview of all of our capital needs all at one time so that we can evaluate them all. At the same time, I feel like we're being asked to make a judgment call on this one before we actually get into our real budget, you know, talks. I just feel like we're putting the cart before the horse on this one. I'm hoping I don't regret saying yes to this project tonight, and then when we're having a more detailed conversation about our capital budget and stuff in a month from now, we're realizing, oh, man, it'd be great to have an extra million bucks for this project, but we weren't thinking about that project at the time we made this decision. So that's why I'm so...
And I totally understand where you're coming from, but do keep in mind that this is a can that's been kicked down the road. We have been talking about this for two years. So this was talked about in budget session two years ago, it was talked about in budget session last year, and we all agreed to do it, but the bids came in too high. And now we've got the bids, even with the additions, we're still going to be a million and a half under what our bids came in at last time by doing the entire project. So that's where my comfort level is with it. And it has to be done. Whether we do it now or we kick the can down the road for another council, this building has to be taken care of. And, sir?
Mr. Mayor, the only other thing I'd add to your point, which is all really good, we have set these dollars aside from any other capital commitments that we have to consider for now and into the future because these dollars have essentially been corralled and carried forward throughout the three-year process that we've been going through this. So that hopefully helps alleviate some of your concerns there.
Lisa?
And so the way, I guess, I look at it is that we do have a long laundry list of buildings that we have to take care of. And so what I don't want to do is do 80% here and then leave some on the table, then we have to come back and revisit. I would rather just get this done and then focus on the next project, and then focus on the next project so that this is completed, so that we're not leaving something on the table that we have to turn around and come back to and then deal with at a later point.
Good point. Counselor Pollock?
You have a question for Lyle and Scott. Scott, you mentioned that there's some notion that you may be able to accomplish some of the exterior goals without adding alternate two through using our own crew and whatnot. In your estimation, to what extent can we accomplish the overall goal of the project? What percentage of it would we be tackling out there accomplishing the overall goal without adding alternate two?
Well, I think Andrew spoke to, sorry.
It's okay. I'm not offended. It's fine.
I think he spoke to the challenge that can come with trying to rearrange and move away from sort of a general contractor-driven project. You can have gaps in how you approach that. It may be that we could accomplish a 10% or 20% reduction or something like that. We looked into some of these things and felt like we could make some headway. The other thing I might mention is that sometimes when you have a building contractor that is going to do this fantastic job with the building, really, that's their bread and butter, sometimes we might look at the exterior improvements, and they may have a markup in there for subs that they're using. It appears that two of the bids had trouble getting a landscaper to even bid on the project, maybe, and that's how those bids got high. Sometimes we can find efficiency by getting that exterior work away from the building contractor and just working with just civil and landscaping companies more directly. But there's no, it's not a promise. It's not a guarantee. So I think the returns are going to be modest in trying to do something different, just as Andrew said. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks.
It's one of those areas where we feel like we could get creative, but it doesn't always produce, it's not going to cut the thing in half or anything like that.
So in order for us to stay on track, there's been a proposal put on the table. We can, if anybody, we can move forward with that one, or we can ask if there's another proposal that interests somebody, but we need to get moving on this if we can. I've already had enough thumbs up for the entire project to be funded. Unless anybody would like to offer something different than that, then that's what we'll go with. And the floor is open if somebody would like to offer something different, certainly. So everybody's okay with where we're at? Okay, you have your direction, sir, to move forward with the entire project.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. So let's move on to city website, please.
Yes, sir. Counselors, this is the opportunity to provide you some insights with regard to our progress so far as it relates to a renovation of our city website and perhaps even a holistic review of how we do things with casperwy.gov. We found a couple of things that I think are really interesting, and I want you to kind of think about this as we go through the presentation from Jolene and team here. We have a vast website here. I was surprised to learn that we have 375 pages with this website. And as near as I can tell, being kind of a non-IT person, that sounds pretty large. And I think you'll find that the research bears out that that is part of our problem, both from a systemic issue as well as from an efficiency, an effectiveness issue. I also was interested to learn that of the amount of pages that we have, we probably have 10 to 20 pages that are used the vast majority of the time. So that means, you know, north of 300 pages are rarely ever accessed, if ever. And I think for a government website, that's probably not too surprising when, in fact, we have a desire of trying to be a clearinghouse for a lot of information as it relates to the government's activity, in our case, the city's activity. I'm really pleased with respect to what you're going to hear tonight, and I really appreciate everybody's involvement that gave us feedback, not only from the council standpoint, but from the public standpoint, as well as other staff and their involvement in giving us insight. But please keep in mind, we are only talking about the website, we're not talking about social media, and this is the first of many visits that we hope to have with you. Because the other thing that we're learning is there are a number of things we need to tackle that will be more long-term in nature, and we want to keep you understanding that we really need to come back and talk to you more than just tonight. So this is a phase one, it's a status report, whatever you want to call it, but the good news is we're making a lot of good progress, and I think you'll be pleased with what we have to report. So if I could...
Yes, please.
...refer to Jolene and Michael's team, I'd sure appreciate that.
Like Andrew, I'm going to go quickly and introduce Michael Shadcheck from IT has been working on it with us, and Rachel will do the presentation. Rachel and Christopher and Michael's folks have done the bulk of the research on this, so I'm turning it over to Rachel Bosas, our communications and marketing generals.
Thank you, Mayor, Counselor.
Mayor, Counselor, thank you for having us here tonight. We're going to talk about the research that we've been conducting over the last couple months into our website. So first, we'll tell you a little bit about what we did. First, we had a Google-certified specialist from the Mark firm conduct a Google analytics audit of the website. Then we distributed a written website to the nine of you, and then councilors Pollock, Inga Breton, and Gamroth came in for a focus group, and then we met with Counselor Haskins later, since she wasn't able to make it that night. Then we had a public survey that was on our city's website, so members of the public who use the website finished that survey for us. Did 472 completed surveys, and of those 472, we had eight individuals come in for an in-person public focus group. And then we distributed a focus group to department directors who had the opportunity to either fill the survey out themselves or send it to managers to fill it out on behalf of their divisions. So now we'll have four recommendations tonight based on all that research we did. So recommendation number one, because our research has shown the importance of the utilities payment page, we recommend improving the utilities' payment user experience. So we asked both council and the public a version of the question, why are you visiting the website? And the vast majority of our public visits the website to pay utilities, to look at their utility bill, and that's reflected in our Google analytics as well that we perform regularly in-house. That's by far our most visited page. So in our council and our public group, public focus groups, we had our participants perform some web exercises, the first of which we asked them to download a utilities bill, and then we took notes on how they got there. And what we learned from both council and the public is it was pretty tough to find. And once they found that payment portal, it was pretty clunky to use. So to improve that, because that is such an important piece of our page, we improved the page design. So what you're seeing here is what it looks like now. When we did the focus groups, the link to the payment portal was about three or four paragraphs deep, and there was a whole lot of text. So what we've done is we've made it a big giant bar, so you really can't miss it, and we've significantly reduced the amount of text on that page. So we tried to improve the design. Beyond that, IT and finance are working on improving the payment processing software so that process is less clunky and more seamless. And finally, based on feedback from Counselor Inga Breton, we'd like to explore the option of what we can do for tenants and landlords to better improve the utilities account. Recommendation number two, because our research has shown that citizens have a difficult time locating information across the 375 pages in our website, we recommend improving the site's search capabilities. So this question was on our staff survey. We asked staff, how often are you able to refer citizens to the website to answer their questions that they ask of you? And about half of our staff said they couldn't, said that the website did not work for them. Counselor Inga Breton said in our focus group that she wanted, I like this a lot, she wanted City Hall to be available at midnight through our website, and if our staff can't use the website, it's really, it's not performing that. So the website exercise that we did in our focus group, we also asked our participants to view that month's open swim schedule at the aquatic center, view what day your trash comes, and then see where your home street is on the snowplow route. So we were asking very basic, essential city functions, and what we... So we were asking very basic, essential city functions, and what we learned is those were really deep in the website, and people had a tough time finding them. So to make these essential things available to our citizens, we really want to improve search capabilities. Councilor Gamroth suggested a chatbot, which we're excited to look into. Right now, when you use the search bar on the website, it searches all of Google as opposed to the city's website. We really want to keep people on our website, so we want to improve that. And we also want to explore document searching software and applications. So the rec guide and the council packets that you all use, those are really dense documents. And if we're going to have them on the website, they need to be easier to search and easier to access and easier to use. So we want to improve that as well. Recommendation number three, because our research has shown that the design of the website is limiting its usage, we want to continue to improve our site design. So we asked this of council and the public, how often do you visit the city's website? And most of council, as well as most of our citizen respondents, only use the website one time a month or less. So the Google analytics, the basic stuff that we can do, we have, we had more than 8,000 visits in the last week, but 6,500 of them were unique. So we're not getting a lot of repeat visitors, which is in our analytics, and the public's recognizing that in their survey responses. 62% of our website is mobile use, which is very industry standard. And on our website, we have 2,578 documents on, across the website. So from our Google analytics audit with the certified specialist, he identified that we have 4,673 internal broken links. So of those 2,500 documents, a lot of them don't work and those links don't go anywhere. Our site does not meet ADA compliance requirements, and we have slow load speeds, which is both annoying as a user and makes people stop using our website, and it also impacts our search engine results. So there's a lot of consequences to that. So in our council focus group, we asked our councilors what they wanted the website to look like and feel like. And all four of them talked, used the two words friendly and accessible a lot. They want to show our citizens, our staff, they want to show our community and how our city operations impact that. So that's a big goal of ours. We want to add photos so that we, our website feels friendly and accessible. We also want to improve our notification capabilities. So whether that's a push notification or subscribing email lists, we want to improve our citizen engagement so that we can more directly communicate with our citizens. We also like to review our website policies and governance. So while, when we find some of those broken links, we try to address them. But if we don't have different procedures and policies in place on our website, it's just going to keep happening. So we need, as an organization, we need to rethink how we're putting content onto our website. We also need to meet ADA compliance standards, so that's meta-tagging our photos, font, colors, photos, improving all of that to be accessible to all of our citizens. And we always need to design for mobile first. Our final recommendation, because our research indicates that citizens aren't familiar with some, with a lot of our city recreational services, we're exploring web-based solutions to promote recreational activities. So in our public focus group, we learned that a lot of our citizens didn't know that we have a lot of our recreational opportunities. And so when we, when we pointed that out on the website, we got a lot of I didn't know. So we want to, we want to showcase a variety of those activities. We want people to know that we have a museum, that we have a shooting complex, that we offer a lot. And beyond that, so that once you know about them, you want to use them, we want to explore payment and registration products so that when you want to buy ghost tickets, you want to sign up for a rec, rec class, or you want to be able to know when your softball game is this week, it's an easy, seamless process that you can do from your bed at night at 11:30 without having to talk to anyone. All right. That's what we have for you today. Do we, Mayor and Council, do we have any questions, anything else we want to talk about?
Counselor Gamroth.
Thanks, Bruce. Thanks, Rachel, for all the information. I'm stoked with the progress we've made already, so I get even more excited talking about some of these recommendations. Since we did our council focus group and I suggested chatbot, that was way before I started playing around with ChatGPT and AI. So I would just, my guess is we can leverage all these new AI tools to really help in that regard, like I would love for it to help our search function in that regard. So hopefully, that's something we explore. Also, with the payment processing that you identified as an issue, I was curious, as you're working with the finance department, to come up with other options, is one of those options, this is something that I believe we all on council heard about, but folks wanting to pay from their bank account but not set up automatic ACH withdrawal, so some form of digital payment that is not credit card, so they can avoid the processing fee, but is not automatic, they have some degree of, you know, autonomy and control over it. I was just hoping that's part of the calculation that we're making on the payment processing side of things. If you could provide any information, that's great. Otherwise, I just wanted to make sure it was known.
Mayor and Council, I, I'm going to defer to Michael, if that's okay.
Counselor, Mayor. An answer to your question, I don't know. So that is something we're looking at. It, the product that we're currently looking at does integrate with our existing system, allow people to pull up utility information, gives them the ability for credit cards, and right now, I understand, automatic payments, right? As I'm understanding what you're saying, the ability for automatic recurring payments or the ability to do an automatic one-time payment through, through a bank account. And so I don't know that differentiation, so that is something we will investigate.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Rachel. Appreciate your time tonight. We better move on in order to make our meeting on time, so we are at EMS grant, sir, and there's five minutes allocated.
Yes, and we'll make up on this one. This is good news. We have been awarded $150-some thousand from, from the Department of Family Services with respect to improving some of our childcare programs that we offer through the rec center. And, you know, we like to give you a little bit of a heads up for these kinds of things, even when it's a receipt of a grant, in case you had any questions. Very good news. Zero match, if I remember correctly. And those are the best of the best when it comes to grants. So if there's any questions, we'd be happy to entertain. It's fantastic.
You have a question?
Just giving thumbs up.
Oh. Everybody okay with receiving those funds? I can't believe Zalima brought money without asking for a dime. I'm, and I love it. Thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you very much. Okay, sir. So it looks like, I don't think you needed a direction on that anyway, did you?
No, sir.
Okay, so request to de-annex city-owned property.
Yes. We're going to pull up an exhibit here in a second that'll give you a feel for what it is that we're talking about. We've been visiting with the city of Mills, and by virtue of what you're seeing here, you're learning a couple of things. First of all, that yellow polygon figure indicates, by the yellow marks there, city ownership of land around the area of Fort Casper and the Isaac Walton areas, both of which are owned by the city of Casper. The mauve coloring, however, shading, in comparison to the adjacent properties, indicates something different. It indicates actual jurisdictional boundaries that relates to the city of Mills across the river there. The basic question, the impetus of why we're here tonight is, in partnership with the city of Mills and in partnership with the county, we would like to start the process of getting those jurisdictional boundaries drawn appropriately so that that land, in this particular circumstance, is within the limits of the city of Casper and not within the limits of the city of Mills. From a service response standpoint, it makes all the sense in the world, particularly when you consider that it is also a city of Casper-owned property, surrounded by city of Casper-owned property as well, that has city of Casper jurisdictional issues as well, or limitations, I'm sorry, influences around it. Pardon me. So the problem is that the process to get this in, to the appropriate jurisdictional boundaries, it is a cumbersome, multi-step process, the likes of which tonight starts with a letter that we'd like you to give your provisional approval for, because with the conveyance of this letter, it actually kicks off a formal process that you will have on the floor, not just once, but multiple times in order to make this happen. And so our question to you tonight is, are you comfortable with us starting with the very, very first step of handing a letter to the town of Mills in partnership with the county, requesting a de-annexation process so that we can ultimately re-annex back into the city of Casper?
And to layman it out for you, since I've been in these meetings and make it even simpler, we are not giving up any land. We will still own the land. All this is doing is drawing imaginary jurisdictional lines so that Mills and Casper know who's taking care of what, and we're not sending our fire trucks over to Mills to fight stuff, and they're not crossing into our boundaries. It's more of a streamlined situation so that both jurisdictions know what they're responsible for when it comes to mainly fire and EMS. Counselor?
Assuming that Mills is amenable.
Absolutely. They actually brought this to us. This was their idea. So it makes all the sense in the world to us, and it's going to mainstream, it's going to be less expensive on both entities as far as not sending trucks out when we don't need to, and them doing the same thing. So it's not giving up a bit of land, it's literally just drawing a jurisdictional boundary so that everybody knows who's servicing what area in the event of a fire or an emergency situation. That's dumbing it down for you is the way I understand it. So does that sound okay to you, right to you?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we can get a thumbs up, we'll get that letter drafted off, and I believe we meet with them, I think it's tomorrow, if I remember right, but I'd have to look at my schedule, but I think we have a meeting with them tomorrow. Okay, we'll move forward with that. Agenda review, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Councilors, the only thing I would bring to your attention is that tonight we do start the formal LED review process for the West Ridge LED that we're proposing to you as a follow-up to one of your previous requests and pursuant to a citizen commentary of the same. We did have another neighborhood meeting. You probably saw my email to that effect, and it went well, a lot of good information was shared, and, you know, I think we're poised to have this formal conversation and hopefully adopt an LED to get some major improvements in that neighborhood.
Excellent. And I will share with you, Ray and I will be meeting with Leah Juarez, the mayor of Mills, on Thursday. She's got quite a bit of insight for that MRG that you'll be very interested in. And Ray and I will come back and share that with you before we meet again on that topic. So just so you're aware that that'll be forthcoming. And I think that's it?
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll adjourn, you've got about seven minutes, and we will start our regularly scheduled meeting. So you did make up quite a bit of time, thank you for that.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. Most of my days- Most of my days.
Once their cell phones, council meetings are televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. I now call the April 18th, 2023 regular city council meeting to order. The chair would entertain a motion by minute action to excuse the absence of Counselor Kathy.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Pollak.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Please join the Vice Mayor in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ray. Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the March 30th, 2023 special council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on April 7th, 2023.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Gamroth, seconded by Counselor Inger Brethson. Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the March 21st, 2023 executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Gamroth, seconded by Counselor Pollak. Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the April 18th, 2023 bills and claims as audited by City Manager Napier.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Inger Brethson, seconded by Counselor Gamroth. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. We'd like to welcome Jennifer Prins, Gary Lowry, and Jessica Caputa to the meeting tonight to discuss National Donate Life Month. We would also like to welcome all Advocates for Life who are here to support the National Donate Life Month proclamation. Please come forward, introduce yourselves, and receive the proclamation.
Great, thank you, Mayor and City Council members. It's an honor and a privilege to be here with all of you tonight. I'm Jennifer Prins, and I'm the President and CEO for Donor Alliance. I'm also a donor family member and a recipient family member, so I bring all of those perspectives and gratitude to you all tonight. Donor Alliance is the organ procurement organization that serves nearly all of Wyoming, and right here in Casper, 63% of the people who go in to get a driver's license or a state ID are saying yes to support organ eye and tissue donation. And we're very grateful for your proclamation and your time tonight, and I'll let my colleagues also introduce themselves. Thank you so much.
Yes, please, of course. Do you have a microphone?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thanks for having us. My name is Gary Lockery. I'm the Regional Donation Consultant for Donor Alliance here in Casper. I've been with the organization for 16 years, and prior to working with Donor Alliance, I worked with Rocky Mountain Land Eye Bank, which is also a recovery agency promoting eye and tissue donation. It's a privilege to be here, and if my surname is familiar, it's because my daughter Sarah is in the Casper Youth Council, and I'd be here on a lot more frequency than I have. Thank you for having us tonight.
May I ask you for your name again?
Gary Lockery.
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 Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessie Caputa. I am the Community Relations Coordinator for Wyoming for Donor Alliance. I have been with them for about three months now. I've been a Casper citizen for a very long time, and I'm super excited to be here, and I really appreciate this, so, thank you.
Thank you. I would invite the three of you to come up here, if you will, and receive the proclamation.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. I do want to point out, we have some of the heart and soul of our organization with our Advocates for Life that are here in the second row, and they help us share the message about organ eye and tissue donation throughout Casper, but also throughout the state of Wyoming. They're the real stars of the show.
You are certainly welcome to introduce them if you'd like to.
I would love it if they would come up and introduce themselves for just a moment.
That'd be fine.
Can they join us for the picture?
They certainly can, yes, ma'am.
I really appreciate that.
Of course. After they introduce themselves, then we'll have you all come up here in between the flags, if you would. Thank you.
I'm Ann Bina. I'm a kidney transplant recipient. I had my transplant in 1999, so I'm 23 years of living well and living life. Thank you.
Hi, Robert Bina, her husband. I'd just like to point out, for anybody who may have seen it or not seen it, it was my wife who managed to get the Living Donor Protection Act through the Wisconsin, or through Wyoming Legislature this year.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's because my representative, Kevin O'Hearn.
I'm Misty Winia. I'm the wife of Jason Winia, who received a heart, and I'm a caregiver.
Jason Winia, heart transplant, March 1st of 2010. Been a City of Casper employee since 2008 at the ICE Arena, and also working at the school district as a head custodian. So much appreciated, thank you.
It is a pleasure to have you all here. Thank you. Whereas April 2023 is the 20th National Donate Life Month with a goal to raise awareness about organ eye and tissue donation, encourage Americans to register as donors, and honor those that have saved lives through the gift of donation. Wyoming is in the top five of the nation with one of the highest donors designation rates in the country. 61% of Wyomingites said yes to organ eye and tissue donation when they received their license or state ID, a decision that reflects deep commitment to one another and confirms that there is good. Sorry. There is good inside all of us. In the Donor Alliance service area of Wyoming and Colorado, a record 278 heroic organ donors saved 739 lives in 2022. Sorry, I'm having a hard time. I'm up here with these people that got life, and it just amazes me. They've recovered tissue for transplant from 1,911 heroic tissue donors, saving and healing with nearly, goodness sakes, 144,000 tissue grafts. There are nearly 150 people still waiting for a life-saving organ transplant in Wyoming. The U.S. has officially achieved its 1,000,000th organ transplant, which is a testament to the life-saving work being done by the Donor Alliance and all organ procurement organizations across America. Now therefore, I, Bruce Snell, Mayor of the City of Casper, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as National Donate Life Month in Casper, and I encourage all our residents to consider giving life through organ and tissue donation. And witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and caused the official seal of the City of Casper, Wyoming, to be affixed this fourth day of April 2023. I apologize for the smearing of the ink on that. That is, that is very touching to meet people who have got to receive organs and get to continue living their lives because of it, so. Very heartwarming. Now's the time, we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. If you're attending virtually and would like to speak, please raise your hand on the Teams meeting. Please state your name, direct all questions or comments to the mayor and only the mayor. No personal attacks on staff or council will be tolerated. Council will not respond to personnel matters, these will be referred to by the city manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by counselors. Presentations will be limited to five minutes, and the duplication of speakers will not be allowed, nor will time extensions be permitted. Please note that public hearings and ordinances each have their own comment period, so if you're here for those, please hold those comments until those items have been reached. So with that said, is there anyone in the audience who would like to approach the lectern and speak to council? Now would be the time to do so. Sir, please come up. Please state your name, and we'll start your time.
My name's Woody Giles. You need my address?
No, sir.
Not good anymore. I technically don't live in the city of Casper, I live across the street from the city. My mail comes and has Casper on the bottom, so I come. Anyway, I read the Sunday paper, and there was an article about homelessness, quite a large article, and that's kind of near and dear to my heart. And I understand there's a group that are looking into it and trying to deal with the situation, and I'm concerned that you're going to treat a symptom and not a cause. I think homeless is a symptom of something else. In the article, it also mentioned housing costs, which is another symptom of the same cause. And I have trouble with the word low-income housing because you're trying to, I'm more concerned about low income than the housing, which is another kind of symptom of seeing the same cause. So as you try to adjust this problem, make sure you're dealing with the cause and not the symptoms. Otherwise, you're going to be swimming upstream for a long, long time and not get anywhere. And I've talked to city councilperson, and says that they're going to spend a lot of money on this problem, and I hope it's not wasted, because when you're all said and done, if the homeless number is the same as it was before you started, then what was the point? So I'm aware of some studies in other parts of the country that addressed housing costs, and every place that did certain things, they achieved success. So Pittsburgh, for one, back in the day, did something that had the lowest housing cost of any major city in the United States. It might be something to look at if you're interested, or do you prefer just doing what you're doing and swimming upstream? I just want to make sure that you try to address the problem and not the symptom.
I will tell you that any information you have and are willing to share with this council is well-received, and you're certainly welcome to send it to us.
Some people know me here. I used to come to these council meetings for five years, every single one. I spent a lot of time in this room. I've made presentations to the council and work sessions, and it gave me an attitude about, you know, council's response. Now, this is all new people, so.
This is a great group of people, and I'm telling you, if you have information, it would be well-received.
And here in five minutes?
Well, no, sir, but we have email capabilities where you can reach out to us, or our phone numbers are available, where you can have a one-on-one conversation with any one of us at any time.
I've had some sit downs with a council member and city manager.
It's a good group of people here, they listen, and they take into account a lot of information. They're very good about it, so I think you'd find a better experience this time around.
I do have facts, so.
Very good.
That was a good thing.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Is there anyone else who would wish to speak to council? Okay, we will move on. Please read the consent agenda title.
Establish May 2nd, 2023 as a public hearing date for consideration of a transfer of ownership for retail liquor license number 37 from Charger Holdings LLC, doing business as Charger Holdings LLC located at 355 West Yellowstone, to Bullhorn Brewing LLC, doing business as Bullhorn Brewing, located at 355 West Yellowstone Highway.
Chair would entertain a motion by minute action to establish a public hearing date just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Inger Brethson, seconded by Counselor Gamroth. Any abstentions or nay votes?
I'd like to abstain, please.
Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With Counselor Pollak abstaining and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of an ordinance regarding local assessment district number 159, Westridge Improvements. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Andrew Beamer to Jay Carter Napier dated April 5th, 2023. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated March 23rd, 2023. Exhibit number three, correspondence from property owners to the city clerk, received between March 23rd and March 29th, 2023. Exhibit number four, ownership and assessment roll dated February 2nd, 2023.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. This is your opportunity to commence with your formal consideration as it relates to the Westridge Local Assessment District, the boundaries of which you see in your exhibit here on the screen. We have discussed this in the past, particularly around the time that the resolution was passed notifying members of the public and ostensibly citizens within this area of your intent to consider this. We are now at the point wherein the public has the opportunity to weigh in. We are now at the point wherein the public has the opportunity to weigh in and advise council with regard to their insights pursuant to the possibility of this assessment district being formally adopted at the end of the three-reading process that this requires. Certainly, if indeed staff receives notification of their objection to this district being formed, equivalent to more than 50% of the landowners and the landmass being considered in total, the LAD could certainly fail, and council would have to consider other options if indeed that should happen. With respect to what's being proposed, this is a $2.1 million project that is comprised of street reconstruction, utility reconstruction, as well as sidewalk and sewer lateral services, if you will, being constructed as well. We have had the opportunity to visit with the neighborhood in question a number of times here, and we have the opportunity now to proceed forward with the possibility of assessments that would include terms, if residents would care to use them, up to 10 years of a loan, if you will, with a 3% interest rate, should residents decide to use those terms that are available. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I would defer the floor back to the council.
Thank you. Council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes. No duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of an ordinance regarding LAD 159 to please approach the lectern. Anyone in favor? Please state your name, ma'am, and the floor is yours.
My name is Cindy Blazek Severance, and I live in the Westridge area. I'm in favor of it, but I have questions. Did you notice where you put your signs for the public meeting you had last week? I couldn't read it.
Point of order. Point of order. You need to address the mayor, not the city manager. Thank you. Thank you.
We had two signs that were apparently placed in the neighborhood. I live on Westridge Circle, which I don't have to go down CY or 15th Street to get to my home. I didn't know those signs were there. A neighbor commented to me on Saturday, "Hey, you weren't at the meeting." I didn't even know there was a meeting because where you placed the signs, they were not visible by all neighbors. I guess the one on CY had trees in front of it. So I have further questions that I'd like to ask somebody about the issue. So if I could just have a phone number of who I can contact to ask my questions, I would appreciate that.
Okay. I think we can certainly get you pointed in the right direction. So, Mr. City Manager, if you could get her the appropriate phone number, and then you can ask away. And there'll be three readings on this, so if you're not happy with the answers you get, you can always come back on the next reading and present your concerns at that time, if that works for you. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for ordinance LAD 159? Okay. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to an ordinance regarding LAD 159 to please approach the lectern. Is there anyone wishing to speak against the ordinance? Okay, there being no others to speak for or against an ordinance regarding LAD 159, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
Creating City of Casper, Wyoming Local Assessment District #159, here and after called the District, ordering the construction of improvements therein, describing the same, directing the preparation of plans and specifications therefore, providing for the publication of notice to contractors fixing the boundaries of said district, ratifying action previously taken, and prescribing details in connection with said district.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read.
All moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Discussion. I will tell you, as part of the discussion, I believe we met with about 90 people from that area. Does that sound about right? And I think there's pretty much overwhelming approval to move ahead with this. So just for the council's, I guess, purview, if you will. So any questions? Pardon? Counselor Anger Breton.
So I guess I'm a little bit on the fence with this. I have had a lot of phone calls. This is in my ward, and I'm not sure if you've had any phone calls. A lot of people are concerned. They're not even sure what brought this up, and so they're just, there's just so many questions. And then I know that this neighborhood is predominantly elderly, so they're not watching this on YouTube, and they're not sending in requests or anything like that. And so I guess I'm a little bit concerned that we're actually reaching the appropriate amount of people that we need to be reaching. And just like this lady just said, that the signs aren't even in the right place. And so I'm just kind of thinking that maybe we need to have a few more meetings or something of that nature. I'm just a little bit concerned that we're rushing through this without people actually really knowing what this is and that they're going to be charged for this.
I could tell you that we've had, we've actually gone overboard on the meetings with this particular neighborhood. We've done more than are required or have been done before. In fact, I believe we've had three now. Is that right?
Mr. Mayor, I probably ought to defer to Andrew for the specific...
Mr. Beamer, would you mind coming to the lectern? And I am aware there were 90 people at the last meeting, so that's extremely good turnout for that size of neighborhood. Mr. Beamer?
Mayor, council, we've had two public meetings. We had a public meeting prior to you even considering the notice of intent resolution, and then we had another meeting just last week where that sign was apparently clouded by trees. But after that notice of intent resolution was passed, we sent that with a cover letter to all the residents in this neighborhood, some 100 of them by certified mail. So they all received that correspondence via the mail after that notice of intent resolution was passed, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Bond.
So I actually...
Turn your mic on, please.
I actually attended the meeting last week with Andrew and his staff. They did a great job of answering questions and so forth. I guess I do, and there were 90 people there. There were like 10, maybe? Yeah.
Maybe we sent out 90 notices, is what it was.
So anyway, I do share some of Counselor Anger Breton's concerns about the, just the notification about the meetings. There was a, I recall there was a person who came and spoke to the council at the last meeting, concerned about there was some conflicting incorrect information in the meeting notices originally. So I do kind of share that a little bit, that we maybe have not given people the full opportunity to come and make comment, although the certified letter certainly kind of clears up a lot of that, so I agree there. But I think as long as people understand that, you know, there are three readings to this, and so that they have, the public has opportunity to come directly to city council meetings and voice their objection. So anything we can do, I think, to get that word out, that these public hearings are taking place, I think would go well. But overall, I would say the reaction of the folks at the meeting last week was very positive, once they kind of understood. There was one question about, you know, would there be any help for, you know, financial assistance for people who might need that? The city doesn't offer that, but there are perhaps other venues or opportunities in the city, in the community, to get public assistance for paying things like that. I'm trying to think of the other... But again, most, once people understood, they were very positive.
Thank you. Any amendments? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Pacheco.
Oh, thanks. Sorry. This is a question for the city manager. I know there's some conversation about, I know this is always difficult to get the word out, and they have the conversations to a large group of people. I've seen this happen before. We've done, you know, certain things before where we've tried to communicate with communities in certain areas. As a city, and I know the city staff does their best to try to reach out to that, is there comfortability for us as we kind of move through the next couple of readings, trying to get information out? Are we looking at wanting to do that as a city, or have we done, you know, most of the share of the lift within that in the last several months? And so, because I put a lot of faith and I trust the city staff doing the best that they can, too, so.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you for the question. Just to give you a feel for the process that we go through to try to be sure that everybody is informed, indeed, the placement of signage is one aspect of how we try to reach out to people, and without a doubt, that presents challenges as well as limitations, because you can never put out enough signage, in my opinion. Secondly, however, as has been mentioned, we do send out a certified letter, which means that every letter that's sent out is required to be signed in order for it to be received. And the letter lays out the details of the LAD as clearly as, you know, we can imagine, anyway, as far as the basics of what's happening and individuals' potential obligations. Furthermore, we did advertise the resolution in the paper so that folks could see, for those that read the paper, what this is all about as well. We post stuff on our website for those who prefer to get information through the website. We also advertise these meetings in the paper as well, as well as on the website, and so on. The mayor is correct. We have had numerous meetings, or I should say multiple. Numerous sounds like a whole, whole lot, you know. Multiple meetings wherein we've tried to bring folks in to share their questions with us so we can get back to them. I would certainly say, particularly as the speaker earlier mentioned, we are very, very happy to have one-on-one conversations. We do entertain phone calls. We have entertained phone calls. We've tried to be as comprehensive as possible in order to get out information with respect to what's going on. I appreciate Counselor Bond's point and Counselor Anger Breton's point. This is, the reading process alone, a six-week process at a minimum pertaining to the opportunities for council to receive more input and receive questions, as well as for staff to receive questions throughout that entire time period. And so I'm not sure what else to do in terms of informing people. We have not gone door-to-door or anything like that, but, you know, if there are ideas that council would like us to pursue, we're absolutely open to that.
Thank you. Just, this is more of a comment than a question. So one of the things that I point out, because I know we've done these types of outreach before from the city, and it's not a perfect thing. It's can be difficult as you send out certified letters, as you try to get out this stuff that goes. I would hope that the community in that area also reaches out to the community, to their neighbors, word of mouth, to have the conversation, to say, "We're going to be doing these readings in the next several weeks," and to please come down if they have questions, just like we had our speaker that came here to say, "Hey, what about this? Can I get some answers?" And we're willing to do that. I think the city staff has proven time and time again that they put that time and effort into it and willing to continue to ask those questions, so I appreciate the work that you guys are doing. But please spread that word around the Westridge area. If they have questions and they want to make a comment, please come to these meetings.
Counselor Pollak?
Thank you. One idea that I would offer, and I don't know if it would be realistic or not, but it strikes me that the two folks who have come to speak on it are both in favor, which is rare. Usually, we're getting folks who don't want the project to happen, but really just had more substantive questions, you know, process questions, and, you know, "How do I pay it? And when is it levied?" And all that sort of thing. And so I'm wondering if it might be helpful to put together a short FAQ that we just send out again to all those addresses, not through a certified mail necessarily, I know that can add up quickly on postage, but, or, you know, just some sort of FAQ even on the website or whatever it might be, just for some of the questions that we've heard a few times, and maybe that would help for folks who didn't get to come to the meeting but did have some questions. Maybe we could answer them more efficiently that way. So if that's something that would be reasonable, it seems to me like folks are generally interested in the project, but just, and happy with the project, but want to just know what the details of it are and how it affects them. So if we can do a little bit of additional communication between now and the third reading, and also, you know, that could be in that mail or whatever we select, could be a way to say, like, "Next reading is this date. Come down or visit the website to contact your council people." So, yeah, maybe just one more touch point. I know we can't do it perfectly, and I know that we do have several mechanisms that we try to use and that are at our disposal. So just one thought that might help.
Thank you. And for those of you that are here or that are watching and don't understand quite what we're doing, this is an entire neighborhood that is about to be repaved, new sewer lines, new water lines, new utilities, new sidewalks, new gutters. The entire neighborhood is getting an upgrade. So you've heard that that neighborhood is elderly, or some of the residents are, which makes sense, because this is one of our older neighborhoods that is in dire need of upkeep, if you will. And anytime we go in and do that, and you get, you're not just getting streets, you're getting sewer, water, utilities, you're getting sidewalks, gutters, the neighborhood is asked to participate in those through this LAD, and it gets spread out over a 10-year period so it doesn't, you know, crush them financially, but the city takes on by far the largest burden of the $2.1 million. So that just kind of gives you an overview of what's going on, could be coming to a neighborhood near you soon if you're lucky. So, and ma'am, if you haven't got that number yet and you don't want to sit here all night, please approach our city manager, or Andrew will give it to you, and that way you're not stuck here all night. So, and thank you for coming. With that said, no more questions on the dais, so please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
We will meet again on this issue in two weeks from tonight. If you have any neighbors or you didn't get your questions answered. Okay, thank you. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of an ordinance regarding a zone change in the Majestic Mountain addition. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Exhibit #1, correspondence from Liz Becker to Jay Carter Napier dated April 14, 2023. Exhibit #2, affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated April 10, 2023.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, counselors. This is an opportunity for you to consider a rezone request, changing the area outlined in yellow on your exhibit here from Park Historic to a C2 classification for purposes of facilitating residential construction in the area. Council is probably familiar with this area, in that Fire Station 6, as well as the Paradise Valley Pool, is located in the adjacent area. The subject area is actually an area that the city used to own, and at one point, a number of years ago, transacted this property to a private property owner, but for whatever reason, the rezone never took place. And so we are now at the point in time where the owner has some interest in developing the property and needs his classification in order to do so.
Thank you. Council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes. No duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of an ordinance regarding Majestic Mountain addition to please approach the lectern. Is there anyone to speak for? Very good. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to an ordinance regarding Majestic Mountain addition to please approach the lectern. Okay, there being no one to speak for or against an ordinance regarding Majestic Mountain addition, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
Approving a zone change of Lot 1, Majestic Mountain Edition, from PH Park Historic to C2 General Business.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Bond, seconded by Counselor Gamroth. Any discussion?
Question.
Pardon? Go ahead. Counselor Pollak.
Thank you so much. Carter, maybe you can give me some insight. Looks like the zoning request is for C2, and the development plan is multi-unit residential housing. Do we know if there's anything planned in, you know, some sort of like retail, or why are we going C2 business versus just R3 or 4, or whatever would allow for the housing?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the question, counselor, but I probably would like to bring Craig up to help us with a little more insight, if that's okay?
Great.
Mr. Collins?
Mayor, counselor, good question. The adjacent zoning is...
The adjacent zoning is C2, and the same property owner owns a lot of the adjacent property and has expressed an interest in doing some hotel for one thing and some retail. It's probably going to be a mixed-use area, and C2 is the most logical zoning classification for mixed use.
Great, thank you.
And I assume, Craig, while you're here, I'm assuming that, Mr. Collins, I'm assuming that they, this went through planning and zoning and all the hoops and was approved by them? Okay, thank you, sir. No more discussion, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With Counselor Inga Breton abstaining and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of an ordinance regarding a plat and subdivision agreement for the Highland Park Tennis Complex addition. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Liz Becker to Jay Carter Napier dated April 14th, 2023. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated April 10th, 2023.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Mr. Mayor, councilors, thank you. This is one of the final steps as it relates to facilitating the project that is underway by the school district on property that the city has conveyed as a part of this development partnership. And so with the approval of the subdivision agreement as well as this plat, our formal step should be relatively close to being finished.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of an ordinance regarding the Highland Park Tennis Complex addition to please approach the lectern. Anyone to speak for? Please state your name and the floor is yours, sir.
My name is Sean Klutz, and I'm not quite sure if this is the correct time to bring up these concerns. But I am for the test courts, of course, like it'll be a great addition for the kids, give them something to do. But one of the concerns I've had, a couple of people I've talked to, is the fence to the new tennis court is like waist-high, so if a ball falls out, it might cause some traffic issues, is one of our main concerns right there. Otherwise, everything about the test court looks great, so I just want to express that concern. This is something we may well look at, so, yeah.
Do you know if that's in the works? I would assume they're going to put a higher fence if there's a tennis court right next to a street.
Mr. Mayor, I actually don't know, but I'd be happy to forward those concerns, which I think are legitimate, to the school district.
Absolutely, thank you, and thank you for that. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak for? No? Okay, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to an ordinance regarding the Highland Park Tennis Complex addition to please approach the lectern. Okay, there being no others to speak for or against an ordinance regarding the Highland Park Tennis Complex addition, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
Approving the Highland Park Tennis Complex addition and the associated subdivision agreement.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Pollock, seconded by Counselor Inga Breton, thank you. Discussion. I do find it, I think that's a really good point, so we should probably follow through with that, so thank you for that. Any amendments? Okay, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of an ordinance regarding a plat subdivision agreement and zone change for the Lukasiewicz subdivision?
Lukasiewicz.
Lukasiewicz, thank you, subdivision. City, Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Liz Becker to Jay Carter Napier dated April 14th, 2023. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated April 10th, 2023.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Mr. Mayor, councilors, thank you for this opportunity to let you know what I know as it relates to this request. As you can tell by virtue of the exhibit here, we have a different zoning classification sort of co-located in the same development area of interest. The dark green represents an ag sort of application. The striated portion represents the R1 portion of the property in question. The developer would like to change the classification on the striated portion to match the ag, we call it urban ag, so that their development would be more consistent with the requirements of the urban ag classification, more so than the R1 side of the property here being noted. And hence the reason you have these requests and, which will allow the developer to move forward with their building plans.
Council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of an ordinance regarding the Lukasiewicz subdivision, please approach the lectern. Please state your name, sir, the floor is yours.
Good evening, I'm Sean Gustafson, ECS Engineers. And Mr. Lukasiewicz couldn't be here this evening, so I'm here to speak in favor and answer any questions. I think the city managers' report on this kind of covered it, but I would love to answer any questions. Really, he's breaking that three, or the parcel and the two lots into a actual two-lot subdivision, all zoned the same, and planning on building two homes on these two lots, so.
While you're here, does he own the entire ag property all the way up through there or just that piece in the middle?
The piece that was outlined.
Okay, that's what I thought, because I, so he's going to be surrounded by ag on both sides? He just wants the piece he owns?
That's correct.
Understood. I understand. Any questions? Thanks, sir. Anyone else to speak for? Okay, at this time, I would ask if there's anyone to speak against an ordinance regarding the Lukasiewicz subdivision. Okay, there being no others to speak for or against an ordinance regarding the Lukasiewicz subdivision, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
Approving a plat subdivision agreement and zone change for the Lukasiewicz subdivision in the city of Casper, Wyoming.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read. Moved by Counselor Bonds, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Any discussion? Counselor Gamroth.
Thanks, Mayor. No, not necessarily on this topic, but previous council might remember, we rezoned just north of these properties and just wanted to make sure folks who are aware that Riverside Coffee, I think is the name of the business, is now open. So, I was glad to see them open their doors since we did that last year. Thanks.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, amendments? All right, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With Counselor Inga Breton abstaining and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of a resolution authorizing a real estate purchase agreement with Neutrona County regarding the city's sale of property located at the corner of 12th Street and Conwell Street. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Wallace Trembath to Jay Carter Napier dated April 6th, 2023. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated March 27th, 2023.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. This is the steps needed to be taken to fulfill our opportunity to partner with the county as it relates to constructing a new health department. As was read, this is at the corner of 12th and South Conwell, adjacent to both the cemetery as well as to the Lifesteps Campus. Council agreed to convey this property to the county for purposes of relocating the health department at this parcel at some point here in the near future.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask those individuals, or no, excuse me, will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of a resolution regarding the real estate purchase agreement to please approach the lectern. Please state your name, sir, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Peter Nicolason. Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager, Mr. City Attorney. On behalf of Neutrona County Commissioners, we just like to thank you for your effort and your work on this. We have spent a lot of time and energy, and I know you have as well. We believe firmly that this is a great location and that this is a great thing for our community for generations. This is not the last step, it's not the first. We've, you know, made a lot of progress. This is a big step, though. And as the liaison also for the county commissioners to the health department, we're also very thankful over in the health department. So, just wanted to say thank you and that, of course, the county supports this. And just a few minutes ago, we did approve at our meeting, which I'm going to head back to now, the proposed contract and look forward to closing this as soon as possible. So, thank you. If you have any questions for the county, I could stand for those, otherwise that's it for me.
Any questions for Mr. Nicolason? I for one would like to thank you. I think it's going to be a great partnership, and I can't think of a better place for it, right down the street from the hospital. So, it's going to be just a fantastic thing for our community, so thank you for all you do at the county. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of a resolution regarding the real estate purchase agreement? Okay, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to a resolution regarding the real estate purchase agreement to please approach the lectern. Very good. There being no others to speak for or against the resolution regarding the real estate purchase agreement, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the resolution by title only.
Authorizing a real estate purchase agreement between Neutrona County, Wyoming and the city of Casper, Wyoming regarding the city's sale of eight acres, more or less, of property located at the northeast corner of East 12th Street and Conwell Street.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution just read. Moved by Vice Mayor, seconded by Counselor Pollock. I'm sorry, I got like three, but she's...
It wasn't me.
Oh, wasn't you? Was it you? Okay, seconded by Counselor Haskins. Thank you. Discussion. For those of you in attendance and watching, this is the, a partnership between the city and the county where we donated eight acres worth of land, there about, on the corner of 12th and Conwell, where they will, the county will construct a new public health building to serve our community, and it is just a wonderful thing, and the city's part in it was donating the land, which is substantial in its own right. So, a great win for the city of Casper and for the residents in the county, in Neutrona County, so. With that said, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving amendments to the liquor license code, sections 5.08.150 and 5.08.390.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read. Moved by Counselor Gamroth, seconded by Counselor Jensen. County, or, excuse me, the council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Is there anyone that wants to speak on this subject? Please state your name and the floor is yours. That's not on. That's not on.
Do I have, okay.
There you are.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and fellow members of council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak again today. I stand before you as a concerned citizen and someone who cares deeply about the well-being of our community, particularly our children. In the heart of the city lies the essence of our future, our children. They are the ones who carry our legacy forward, and it is our responsibility to create a safe and nurturing environment for them. That is why I am here today to discuss the impacts of the proposed change to the early morning hours of liquor service and how it affects the safety of our young ones as well as our community at large. Imagine our children stepping out of their homes every morning, ready to embrace the world, eager to learn and grow, and to be faced with the fact that golfers who started playing an early morning of golfing session would likely be finishing their rounds the same time that our community's students and workers are commuting to school and work. During these peak commuting hours, our roads are already congested. Adding alcohol consumption to the mix could pose significant risk for public safety. Our children deserve to go to school without the fear of encountering alcoholic impaired drivers on their way. According to a study published by Journal, by the Journal of Studies on Alcohol and Drugs, alcohol consumption during early morning hours is associated with an increased risk of alcohol-related accidents, particularly during periods of high traffic density. The statute grants city councils the authority to set the hours of alcohol service. While the proposal to align service hours for limited liquor licenses with those of other licensed types aims to standardize licenses within our city, it is not to align with the previously stated state statute. And as such, we must ask ourselves, is it worth the risk and safety of our children? During the last meeting, concerns were raised about veterans and members of other clubs being able to enjoy a drink during early morning hours. It has been brought to our attention that many of these clubs are already operating at these early hours, so the proposed change would not affect the ability to serve alcohol. This is not about making sure veterans can enjoy a beer when they are wanting to. In conclusion, I urge the city council to carefully consider the potential risks associated with early morning alcohol service, particularly in relation to our community's most precious assets, our children. As we strive to standardize licenses within our city, we must not compromise public safety. Let us come together as a community, united in our compassion for our younger ones, and find a solution that benefits everyone without putting our city, our citizens, at risk. At the end of the day, it seems like council is pushing someone's personal agenda and putting profits before safety. And so, I leave you with this thought. If you truly care more about Bloody Marys and bottomless mimosas, as stated in the last meeting, than the children and the hard-working members of our community, then by all means pass the ordinance as is and show the city where the council's priorities lie. However, I believe that together we can find a better solution, one that keeps the community safe and respects the needs of all, potentially a permitting program that would allow the city to take into account traffic conditions on days in which golf courses are applying for said permit and ensure that the children would not be affected while traveling to school. Ultimately, I would like to see more of a conversation around this instead of staying silent and pushing this through. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, discussion. I will, I don't see a hand up yet, so I will open discussion by saying, we have people that work night shifts, and if they want to go have a drink, they should be able to do so. And I will also tell you that I'm a little offended when somebody says, "If Bloody Marys and alcohol consumption are more important to you than our children in our community, then you should vote this down." Baloney. My kids are the number one priority in my life, your kids are the number one priority in my life, period. I'm still going to vote yes for this because state statute and every bar in this town can open at 6:00 in the morning if they choose to. This literally affects the VFW club and the golf course, so they can get in line with everybody else. Our bars are already open at 6:00 a.m. We've heard from the chief of police, it's not a big deal, it's not going to really put any strain on us. It's a hard yes for me. Lisa?
So, I'm, my opinion is I am not for this. I honestly believe that we shouldn't be opening up anything at 6:00 a.m. and for a lot of different reasons, and so I am going to be voting no.
Anyone else? Mr. Gamroth.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Seth, for taking the time to inform yourself and provide your comments this evening. I will also continue voting no on this. I understand the merits of the argument that there's night shift workers and they should be allowed the same freedoms as day shift workers, and so I think there's some merit to that argument. However, I do wish this council and future councils would create some sort of paradigm that they use to determine how liberal we want our alcohol laws to get. We're not using any sort of guiding document or curriculum or philosophy. We're just kind of taking these as a, you know, as they come up basis. And at least during my time on council, we have continued to liberalize our alcohol laws, allowing people open longer, later, open containers during the summer season. And so, some of those I'm still fine with, but I am going to be voting... And so, some of those I'm still fine with, but I am going to be voting no, sort of in a form of protest because I still don't feel like we're using an evidence-based approach to pass this sort of policy. And until then, I'm going to continue pushing back on continued liberalization of our alcohol laws, considering how much of our crime in Natrona County is alcohol involved. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. This is a question for our city attorney. The basic objective of this ordinance is to align it with our state statute. So other communities in our state probably have similar laws. I don't know the exact level of that. And I'm very well aware of issues related with alcohol, and alcohol tends to be the much more bigger issue than multiple other types of other drugs. But this really is about just aligning up with the state statute.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Pacheco, I think it's really about aligning this type of license with the hours that are allowed for the other license.
Thank you. Thank you.
In the city. I think the state statute does give city council quite a bit of latitude in setting the hours. But, and I would turn to staff if there's anything to add, but it's my understanding that this is to bring the hours for the club licenses in alignment with the other types of licenses.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I'll say, if this council wants to take a position that we don't want people drinking in our city anymore, or we want to pick what hours they can drink in our city, then it should be across the board, and we should go to work on something like that. If that's what this council wants to do, I will be adamantly opposed to that. But what I'm telling you is, it is highly unfair when, right now on the books, any bar can open in this town at 6:00 a.m., but you're telling the golf course and the VFW club that they can't. And I have an issue with that. It's private enterprise that pays the taxes in this city that employs people, and we're saying, "You can, but you can't." And it reminds me of COVID, when we said, "You have to close, but you can be open." The big box store Home Deco can be open, but Blowdorn's got to shut. That restaurant can be open because they're a national chain, but you have to close, the mom and pop. What right do we have to tell private business when they get to open and when they don't? We have a state statute, and where my point is coming from is, if other people in our city can do it, everybody should be able to do it, in my opinion. So if you want to change the liquor laws, change them across the board. Do not leave this highly unfair practice of telling one business, "You can be open at 6:00," and telling another one, "You can't open until 9:00." That's wrong, and it is overreach, and I don't like it. So, that's just my opinion. Lisa?
I think it just comes down to, just because you can does not necessarily mean that you should. And so, it comes down to the fact that it is a bit concerning that people are out drinking at 6:00 a.m. and, for whatever reason, that whether they're working at night or things of that nature. But we are all trying to get to work, we've got schools and things of that nature. So we have considerably more traffic happening than it is in the evening hours. So that's why I'm voting no.
You do understand that the bars are open at 6:00 in the morning, right? Every bar in this town can open at 6:00 a.m.
It does not mean that I agree with that. I do not agree with that.
Mr. Gamroth?
Thank you, Mayor. Great segue. You mentioned the unfair practice of bars being allowed to open at 6:00 a.m. but these clubs and golf courses not being able to. I was hoping, we did not have Eric as our attorney at the time, so maybe our city manager could remind me. When did the legislature lax those statutes to allow this? And did our city council not liberalize those alcohol... You know, the unfair practice was implemented by this city council, I believe. So could you remind me when those state statutes allowed greater freedom and flexibility? And at what point, the city of Casper allowed bars to open at 6:00 a.m. as a result? Does anyone have that information on hand?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Gamroth, I do believe it was 2017 when the state statutes were changed. And really, what that did was put the onus back on the local governments, whether it's the county or the city government, to really set those hours. Whereas prior, the state statute really kind of set that out, but local control then was basically granted.
So the city council at one point... And my memory's failing me, I don't recall if this happened while I was on council, but leads me to believe city council at one point partially changed those hours. It was, you know, the onus is on city council at the time that they had expanded those hours that they didn't include. So the unfairness is a result of this body's policymaking, is my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor... I don't know the history, but I do think that was... Yeah, it was...
I don't...
It was missed, and so this would... For this license type, and this is the club license, it wasn't set at 6:00 a.m. like the other types were, whenever that occurred.
And that's my understanding, that it was an oversight. And so, it is this body that is performing the unfair practice by not allowing them to align with everybody else and what they're doing.
So, I'm going to vote yes on the second reading, and for the reason I'm voting yes on it is a couple different reasons. One, I think aligning it with the state statute, I think, is going to be a good practice as far as law, when we're looking at those things. The other part of it is, is that if... I will also agree with the mayor, that I think if the council feels like 6:00 a.m. is too early for all establishments, then we come back as a council and then try to bring that forward. I will say there will be major pushback because they have had the bars open at 6:00 a.m. and liquor establishments for many years. So there's going to be a lot of major pushback because they've had that precedent, which we have set. So, my point is, is that I think we... I'm going to move forward with this on the second reading. In this sense, go forward with it, and then if this council wants to come back, look at it and have the conversation to say, "Well, then we need to create an ordinance to move liquor establishments can't open up until 10:00 in the morning because of safety issues or whatever we come up with," that's where I can kind of come from. But as far as understanding the direction that we were given by the city staff to align the law, that's where I'm going to end up on this one.
The last thing I'd like to say is, I want to put this into perspective. So, and I did my homework. I talked to the golf course, and I talked to the VFW club. The golf course, on their best day, may have four people at 6:00 in the morning, on their best day. They said they generally don't get rounding until the heat of the summer, till about 7:00 or 7:30. And by the time those people make the turn, it's 9:00 anyway. So at best, at 6:00 a.m., they're going to have four people if the four that come there decide they want to drink. The VFW doesn't open at 6:00 in the morning. They never have, and they're not doing it now. So at best, we're talking about adding four people to the approximately 500 people that are drinking in our bars at 6:00 in the morning, that have just got enough shift or whatever they're doing in there, I don't know. So, and most of our bars aren't even open at 6:00 a.m., by the way. So this is a whole lot of fuss about four people. So, and I did the math, I did the work. So, you can do what you want with that, but... Mr. Bond?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I voted no on the first reading of this ordinance. I reconsidered, I guess I would say. I do hear, Bruce, what you're saying as far as, you know, bringing it into alignment with the current practice in other establishments. And I understand that. I don't... I agree that we shouldn't be penalizing one or two establishments, just under a technicality, basically. I also believe that society evolves in our understanding and our approaches to substance control and substance use. And I think that's where we are, is I think... And I think Seth kind of captures that, as far as... I think that's what Seth is speaking to, is, you know, as a country, as citizens, we're evolving in our thinking and our knowledge base about substance use. And so, I think... I... Well, I am going to vote in favor of the ordinance on this second reading, but I do think that it may be time for a larger discussion about, you know, like as Counselor Pacheco's... Vice Mayor Pacheco is saying, is, we're looking at the whole approach to alcohol governance in our community. Thank you.
We're going to move on to our vote, but in closing, I would like to say, it's presumptuous to think that those four people... Are you back up? Okay. It's presumptuous to think that those four people are going to be out drinking and driving, first off. I don't think that's a fair assertion. And I think, in talking with the chief, we have a lot more people that are driving their cars impaired at 2:00 a.m. than we would ever have to worry about at 6:00 a.m.
The one thing that I do want to bring up is the fact that from 2017 to today, that we did not have as many horse racing. And so, we are completely inundated with the three... With the multiple different horse racing. And so, I know that they're predominantly open first thing in the morning, so that's also something to consider.
They're open till 2:00 a.m., but they don't open their doors until 10:00 a.m. They're not open at 6:00 a.m. They open at 10:00. So, and they are... Actually, they have bar licenses. They could sell at 6:00 a.m. if they chose to, but they don't open until 10:00. So, okay. I guess it's time to cast our vote. So please do that. And please record the vote.
With Counselor Pollock abstaining, and Counselor Inga Bretson, and Counselor Gamroth voting no, and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Oh goodness, are you ready? This is going to be a long-winded moment. Consent resolutions.
9A1, approving a site plan and accepting the ground lease agreement between the city and YO complex as the site plan agreement.
Sorry.
9A2, authorizing amendment number one to the contract for professional services between the city of Casper and HDR Engineering Incorporated. 9A3, authorizing a contract between the city of Casper and Civil Engineering Professionals Incorporated for the Mills-Platt River Trail Connectivity Study. 9A4, accepting a deed of gift from Rockin' Cave Properties LLC for a 1,978 square-foot parcel in the vicinity of West First Street and Nichols Avenue. 9A5, authorizing amendment number one to the contract for professional services between the city and Bearing Belt &amp; Chain Incorporated, doing business as NAPA. 9A6, authorizing the First Amendment of the employment agreement with James Carter Napier for city manager services. 9A7, authorizing acceptance of a grant from Wyoming Game and Fish Commission, Wallop Row Boating Access Fund. 9A8, authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Wyoming Food for Thoughts Grant Application to the Rocky Mountain Power Blue Sky Program. 9A9, authorizing amendment number one to the memorandum of understanding for community recreation facilities between the city of Casper, Wyoming and Natrona County School District. 9A10, authorizing a rental agreement with Sweds Baseball Club LLC for use of the Mike Lansing Baseball Stadium. 9A11, authorizing a rental agreement with Casper Baseball Club for use of Mike Lansing Baseball Stadium. 9A12, authorizing change order number two with Modern Electric Company for the Solid Waste CRL Electrical Service Upgrades Project. 9A13, authorizing amendment number two to the contract for professional services with Holland &amp; Hart LLP for providing legal services. 9A14, authorizing a procurement agreement with Dana Kepner Company of Wyoming Incorporated for the 2023 Casper Public Utilities Materials Procurement. 9A15, authorizing a procurement agreement with Ferguson Enterprises LLC, doing business as Ferguson Waterworks, for the 2023 Casper Public Utilities Materials Procurement. 9A16, authorizing change order number five to the agreement with Insidiform Technologies LLC for a time extension for the North Platt Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project. 9A17, rescinding resolution number 22-119, a resolution authorizing a professional services contract for transit services for the city of Mills, Wyoming municipality for fiscal year 2023. 9A18, authorizing a transportation services contract for the city of Mills, Wyoming municipality for fiscal year 2023. 9A19, authorizing a transportation services contract for transit services for the town of Bar Nun, Wyoming municipality for fiscal year 2023. 9A20, ratifying the mayor's signature and approving the 1-YO2 opioid settlement memorandum of agreement. 9A21, authorizing a contract between the city of Casper and Ayers Associates for the North Platt River Park Number Two Simple Master Plan. 9A22, authorizing a contract with AAA Landscaping LLC for weed mowing and litter abatement. 9A23, authorizing a contract with Brian's Go-To Service for weed mowing and litter abatement. And 9A24, declaring the intent of the city of Casper, Wyoming to create Local Assessment District Number 160 Chinook Trail Improvements in said city to authorize the construction of local improvements therein and to assess the cost or portion thereof on the property benefited thereby.
And breathe. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda items just read.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Pollock, seconded by Counselor Inga Bretson. City manager, would you like to comment on any of these items?
Mr. Mayor, real quickly, if I could, just for council's awareness and potentially folks who may be interested in this, with the passage of this consent agenda, you are authorizing a resolution for another LED, the LED associated with Chinook Trail, much smaller, much fewer residents, but indeed, a very, very similar process that you are initiating with this agenda.
Thank you, sir. Any abstention or nay votes? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
All counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Please read the consent minute action titles.
10A1, authorizing the purchase of one new turf utility vehicle for use by the Casper Municipal Golf Course. 10A2, authorizing the purchase of one new heavy-duty crew cab chassis four-by-four truck with dump body and accessories for use by the Solid Waste Division of the Public Services Department. 9A3, authorizing the purchase of Bauer Unicus 4S breathing air compressor from Weidner Fire Equipment for use by the Casper Fire EMS Department. 9A4... Or, sorry, 10A4, authorizing the purchase of a custom service body from Highway Products for use by the Casper Fire EMS Department on regional response deployments. 10A5, authorizing the purchase of 10 Scott Hazmat SCBA's masks and 26 bottles from Sea Western for use by the Casper Fire EMS Department on regional response hazmat calls. And 10A5... Or, 10A6, rejecting all bids received for the City Hall Project Safe Asbestos Abatement.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action items just read.
So moved. Second.
Any abstention or nay votes? Please cast your vote.
We... Okay.
Please record the vote, sorry.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. This is a moment in time where we ask our counselors to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. Counselor Bond?
No concerns.
Turn your mic on, please.
So, just a few comments about... So first of all, just a reminder about the senior citizen... The Senior Senator fundraiser night at the races on May 6th. I do have tickets available if anyone would like to purchase tickets. I did attend the governor's male health conference for a short time today at the Nicolason. A lot of people from out of town there, it was good to see those folks there and enjoying the museum and enjoying our city. And I think that's it.
Okay. Well, thank you. Counselor Haskins?
I don't have anything today. We have a county health department meeting on Thursday. As the liaison, I do want to say that we are very excited about this 12th and Conwell. It's been a long time coming.
Yes.
From that, I've got nothing.
Thank you. Counselor Pollock?
Thank you. I had... Amoco reuse agreement joint powers board meeting last week. Mostly, just bulk of that work right now is dealing with the Three Crowns improvements that are underway right now, so we just had an update there. And then today, had the regional water meeting. Long story short, we really basically went through the budget today as a first pass. Last month was capital agenda, this month budget, next month we'll consider rate model and then put it all together before we have to come up with the official budget to be approved here. So, yeah, so we went through kind of line by line and happy to provide further detail, or it will be in the minutes of the meeting in the next packet.
You're good. Thank you. Counselor Inga Bretson?
Last week, I attended the Parks and Rec Board and then the Finance Committee this morning, and then Thursday, I have got the Contractors Board. I want to talk a little bit... talk a little bit about Fort Casper. They had went to the Parks and Rec to do their reporting. And so, I'm kind of excited about all the changes that they're making. On April 28th, they're going to have kind of a, a run, so they've purchased a bunch of ghost hunting materials, so that you can go for $15 a person, and then go throughout the whole grounds, and then try to find some activity, and then you can report back to like a Facebook page, which I think is gonna be kind of fun. So, it's, I urge everybody to go out and give that a try. Unfortunately, I won't be here. And then, they're gonna be doing some live reactments on the weekends this summer. And so, they've got a lot of big things that they're changing and doing, and they're, they're freshening things up. So it's kind of exciting to see that they're kind of changing things and, um...
Awesome.
...and doing what they're needing to do.
Awesome, thank you. Counselor Jensen?
I had to write down some notes because I was thinking some things here. So, uh, one of the things that are coming up is the, over at the National Historic Trail Center, we are having a open house on May 4th, so may the 4th be with you theme. So you're welcome to come, bring the family and the public. Um, is, welcome to come and dress, uh, in your costume and support, um, Casper tourism, where it's kind of a kickoff, I do it every year, it's a kickoff to National Travel and Tourism Week, which also is the following week, which is the 7th through the 12th, and Visit Casper is going to be participating in quite a few things, too, and have different activities and events up throughout town. So, check out visitcasper.com. Also, um, we do have, this is information just to get it out there and get some, uh, Facebook likes, but it's, the museum consortium is coming back, and it is called the Museums of Casper. So they do have a Facebook page now, so look on there, it's all the museums that are here. Um, the Trail Center, the NIC, Fort Casper, just everything, um, all coming together to one, to let the public know. Different events, and we're gonna be bringing back this passport, too. So, a lot of summer stuff for the kids. Facebook, like Casper, Museums of Casper. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Gamroth?
Thank you, Mayor. Glad to hear the passport programs coming back. I really like that program. Uh, Casper Housing Authority, uh, of which I'm the liaison, they were just recently awarded 1.65 million for the construction of the Willard Invision Center. That was a grant from the SLIB Board, and, uh, they had said that it was the most unique application they received in regards to health and human services from, uh, for ARPA grant funding. So, just want to give a shout out to Casper Housing Authority. Uh, glad they got that grant, and, uh, it's absolutely gonna help complete that project over there on Willard. I, uh, also attended the Governor's Mental Health Summit, uh, for most of the day. Uh, there were some very impassioned speeches from Speaker of the House Albert Summers, Senate President Ogden Driscoll, Governor Gordon, uh, Chairman of Labor, Health and Social Services, Representative Baldwin, and also Chief Justice Fox from the Wyoming Supreme Court. She spoke about the importance of, uh, bless you. She spoke about the, uh, importance of social determinants of health and the focus on treatment and prevention over incarceration for low-level nonviolent drug offenses, and so I was just very happy with the tone of, uh, that summit. Um, big shout out to the Senate President and, uh, Speaker of the House. They both got up there and again, gave very impassioned speeches and, um, struggled a bit like our mayor did to get through the, uh, readings today, but I, I love seeing that, uh, uh, because it helps combat this stigma in Wyoming of, uh, tough men don't cry, they don't show emotion. Uh, I think it's the absolute opposite. It, it takes a great deal of courage to show some vulnerability, so I was, uh, glad to see that from our state's leaders today. And then, uh, lastly, uh, in our information packet this last week, just, uh, these are one of those tidbits that I always find very interesting. Obviously, the potholes are real bad out there. If you didn't see any of the public messaging from the city of Casper, please report that to the city of Casper's app, um, so that, uh, that can help prioritize, uh, which ones are getting patched. But, in our information packet, some very interesting reading as far as, uh, from December 21st of last year to April 11th of this year, our streets and traffic department filled potholes with 37 and a half tons of bulk cold mix, 6,200 pounds of, uh, HP concrete patch, whatever that is, and, uh, 4,400 pounds of asphalt patch. And, uh, so I just say that as a reminder to people that they are out there doing what they can. Obviously, conditions have to be dry enough and, uh, warm enough to do the permanent patching, but they are out there doing what they can, when they can. And, uh, it sounds like here in relatively short over, we aim to fill all the potholes that are the result of this most recent storm, which, again, historic snowstorm, more snow than we've gotten since, uh, we started record keeping. So, as a direct result of that, we're gonna have a lot of potholes, too. So, um, little bit of patience and grace. I, I know it's real bad out there in spots, uh, but we're gonna do our best to get there as, as soon as we can. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Uh, I had a Nautrona County Recreation Joint Powers Board meeting last Friday. We had nine applicants that we reviewed. Um, I won't go into depth, obviously, about that, as they, we're still reviewing those, and, um, they haven't been notified, but, um, some several, uh, $100,000 there to award, um, to very good causes, um, within the community, um, around that area. I'll keep you guys up to date on that. Uh, Council of Governments with the mayor on Thursday morning at Ingleton's at 7:00 a.m. It's gonna be blast, um, as usual. Um, didn't get a chance to go to the symposium, uh, to the, um, mayor's summit today, or excuse me, the governor's summit today. Um, I think any discussion, though, from what I've heard, that didn't happen over there regarding, um, providing mental health for all people, um, will be the discussion around Medicaid expansion. Um, that, we have several people that are not receiving the care that they need, um, and it's gonna be critical for us to be able to do that. We are one of several few states left in the nation that do not have Medicaid expansion, and it will be critical to address the mental health needs within that. And unless they're having that conversation at that summit regarding around that, um, it's gonna be a lot of work, because the state doesn't have the, the funding in order to feed, to meet that need. So, that's the conversation that should be happening, um, at these summits. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a few things. Uh, one, concerning the homeless, I, I, I hope the public understands, we're not looking to, to put homeless people in jail or to put them out. Um, I mean, they're already down on their luck, that, that's not the issue. We're, what we're dealing with is public safety and, and things that surround that by allowing them to congregate in areas that they shouldn't be in. So, um, that's kind of the gist of why homelessness is so prevalent on our docket right now. Um, uh, Sunday, my wife and I attended the Boys and Girls Club's Dream Essay, uh, which was just incredible. It was at the Ramcoada, they had over 1,000 entries from statewide students, um, who, uh, there was certain categories that they had to write on, which I gave you all a book on. And, uh, wonderful to see. I'll tell you, people always say that this country's going to heck and this younger generation, but I'm telling you, there was a group of young people there that are literary, they're intelligent, they're articulate. It was fun to watch, fun to see, uh, warmed my heart immensely to see these young people, uh, doing what they do. And they, they garnered some really nice cash prizes. They handed out, I think, a little over $15,000 in that room, just while I was there, uh, for the winners, uh, first, second, third, and the honorable mention. But it was, uh, just an amazing thing. The Boys and Girls Club, I'm just astounded at the work they do in Casper, especially. So, uh, anyway, that was very enjoyable. Uh, I wanted to remind you, June 18th is the last Sunday of the national finals, college national finals rodeo, and that is Family Day, and they are offering mutton bustin' this year, which if you go to rodeos, it is the best thing ever to watch. So if you have a young person between seven and nine years old, that's, I think, less than 70 pounds, uh, when you buy your ticket and go in that day, they can register, they're gonna take, I think, the first 25 that register, and they can actually win a buckle at that. So, that'll be, that'll be a fun thing. Um, potholes are, seem to be on everybody's mind, and I was, uh, on social media today, and I had a guy that was really complaining about one of the repairs they did. So I, I asked him, I said, "What's wrong with the repair that they did?" Because it looked fantastic. And, uh, he didn't have an answer for me. But he said the city was out doing, in his words, "A half-assed job," and it kind of irritated me, because we have potholes everywhere. Our winters are so hard on our roads, and water gets down in them and freezes, and that's what breaks that up as it thaws, and people are driving on it with 6, 7,000-pound vehicles. And we understand there are potholes everywhere, and I, trust me, we are out and we are doing them. I ran into the truck three different times today, in different places where they're trying to repair these things. There's a lot of them. So please use our 311 app to report those. You might have one in front of your house, and we don't even know about it. So please be accountable, report it to the city, and I can promise you, they'll get to it, because there's, we have a lot of streets here, and they are working diligently to get them taken care of. So we want to thank them for that. And, uh, that's all I have. So the next meetings of the city council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 p.m. next Tuesday, April 25th, in the council meeting room. A regular council meeting will be held at 6:00 p.m. Tuesday, May 2nd, in the council chambers. A notice of executive session to take place at this date and at this time, uh, when the meeting was given, we have matters to discuss regarding land, personnel, and litigation. Therefore, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session.
So moved.
Moved by the vice mayor, seconded by Counselor Bond. Okay. There being a majority of members present, and a motion to adjourn into an executive session having been moved and seconded, and that motion requiring a two-thirds majority vote of the council present, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Let's please adjourn to the council meeting room. Thank you for those of you that attended and spoke tonight.